Look at that. That's nice. What's this? Mayor, I'm going to grab you right after the meeting regarding some road work stuff, please. Then we're going to go on my Scotch. What's this? There you go. It's that type of night. It's been. And when you made those meetings a week ago, you didn't know it was going to be like this, you know? Okay. Two, three, four, six. It's actually a really clear image. Yeah, it's actually, it's much better done than some of the other places. This is pretty good. It really is.
Yes, sir. Turn our mic on. There you go. All right. Good evening, everybody. This is our, I'm not going to get used to this, our December Planning Board meeting. Welcome. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Sunshine Laws of the State of New Jersey, Chapter 145, by Mayor and Council, and the Planning Board for Official Notices. Notice of this meeting was posted on the Bulletin Board and the borough's website for that purpose. Suzanne, can we have the attendance?
Ms. Bonacorsi. Mr. Madden. Chairman Dukakis.
Here.
Mr. Hanson. Mayor Hauck.
Here.
Mr. Famular. And Mr. Schmidt.
It looks like we have a quorum. Thank you. So could you all please rise for the flag salute? Thank you. And we're going to review last month's meetings, meeting minutes. You all had a chance to review these? Okay, so Emily pointed out there was the legal counsel for the applicant was Jim Hatzell. Suzanne, could you make that correction? It's the last paragraph?
Yep.
Are there any other corrections? Okay. Hearing none. Just, we'll just do a voice vote. All in favor of the minutes, say aye. Any abstain? Any opposed? No, thank you. We have two abstentions. And Zach. Thank you. The minutes have passed. Next is to vote on the resolution. This is Resolution Case 22-11-1P, KLD Ventures LLC 301 White Horse Pike, Block 33, Lot 7. We all had an opportunity to review that resolution. And if there's no comments or corrections, could I have a motion to approve? Thank you. Second? Jennifer, second. Suzanne, this is a roll call vote of all who voted yes.
Sure. Chairman Dukakis.
Yes.
Mr. Famular. Mr. Madden.
Yes.
Ms. Bonacorsi. And Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. That motion is passed. Resolution's passed. Next, we go to our new business for this evening. This is case, we only have one case this evening. This is Case 22-12-1P, Carl and Nicole Natalino, 1931 Bryn Mawr Avenue, Block 135, Lot 15.01. Would you like to come forward, please? Good evening.
Have a seat.
Have a seat. Is that microphone happy shifted, do you think?
Oh, you can move it.
Good evening. Our associate will swear you in and then you can begin your test of.
Swear, Mr. Bachin, as well. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll be giving this evening will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Applicants, if you could please state your full name and address for the record.
Nicole Natalino.
Carl Natalino, and we're at 1931 Bryn Mawr Avenue.
And if you could just describe your application for the board?
Sure. We are requesting to replace our second-story dormer with a full second story.
Do you have any elevations or anything that you would like to share with the board?
Any drawings?
Drawings of the proposal?
They're all submitted in the pack here.
We.
If we only had, I only saw like site plans.
You don't have the architectural drawing.
Architectural drawings.
We have architectural drawing, yes.
Oh, okay.
And you did submit those?
I mean, I have them in my email.
They're just photos, yeah. You have them, Suzanne?
I don't think I do.
Oh. Did you bring any this evening?
We have them digitally. We can share them if we can.
Yeah, it'd be perfect. You, my recommendation would be is can we email them?
To Suzanne?
Suzanne.
I have them.
Can you pull them up on your email there? If we get them emailed to you real fast, we'll.
I'll see.
And then we could put them on the TV?
Yep. That'd be my thought. Look at that. TV's going to come in handy.
Cool. Can we watch the Flyers game after? Aww. As are Philly fans.
I'm sorry.
Guys, don't worry. It's okay. Fortunately, you're the only case we have.
At least no one's behind us.
No one's behind you, and we're probably going to still finish on record.
Yeah, not probably.
That's true, but I'm not in charge of the meeting.
Mr. Bach, have you seen the architectures yet? No?
No.
But I understand what the applicant is proposing.
So will that impact your review?
Not at all. It won't affect my review at all. It was very clear what the proposing is to stay within the existing building envelope for the outside perimeter and just go up with the second story there. Not proposing, my understanding, any further encroachment into any of the yards.
So they're not going to cantilever the framing over the first floor, then?
Only on the back of the house, not on the front or the sides.
Okay.
The back side of the house, there will be a two-foot cantilever.
Which does not impact.
Right, because it's within the rear yard setback.
The rear yard.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So in essence, that is the application.
Yeah.
Also, if I may note, while you're waiting for the email, this property was a subject of an application prior where they already sought impervious coverage relief. And that's noted in our review. Actually, in November 192020, this property received impervious coverage relief to go to 46%. So what we're here for this evening is recognizing the new second story as needing a front-side and a side-aggregates setback, but in keeping with the exact same dimensions as currently exists for the first story, front, side, and side aggregate.
Right. It's an expansion of a non-conformity.
Yes.
Thank you. Suzanne, did you get it?
Yes, I have it. I'm just trying to.
So while Suzanne's doing that, I just had one question in my review. And that is, the application indicated there was going to be a front porch.
Yes.
Is the front porch going to extend out into the front yard any further than the front porch of your building does now, which is right, the portion of your home that is right at the planter, which is 20.09 feet? Is the porch going to come out any further than that portion of the home?
No, it'll be, it'll be even with the brick facade on the righthand side.
So it's, you're infilling the jog-in with a porch. So there's no change to my review based on the comments of the applicant.
It's five feet, basically. It's a five-foot deep porch.
Yeah.
That's because that's what the dimension indicates.
There's a paved area, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, where the pavers are, then we're going to just replace the pavers with a raised porch. And above the porch, there will be living space.
Well, that's a little different because the pavers extend past the front of the house.
No, here.
Won't be the full, okay.
It will be flush with the front of the house.
Right. And so there's a dimension on your survey that indicates that to be five feet depth. Okay.
Right, okay. Sorry, the best I can do is pass my laptop around.
Yeah. Yeah.
So right here.
You can just go right.
Yep, yep.
But I can't, the drop boxes, that, it's different.
You can't get to it?
It's on absolute lean.
Okay. That's fine.
Established.
I think we've done it, yeah.
I guess the issue is, the second story is not going to exceed the height limit of 35 feet.
They're not asking for any relief, yeah. They're not asking for any relief from any other relief except for the front, side, and side. It's all other aspects of the borough ordinance. They would have to comply with.
Sure. So I have a question. Are there other two-story houses in your neighborhood?
Yes. Actually, our neighbors across the street just took off their, they were one-story, and they just took the roof off and built a second story, and I guess their house was inside all the appropriate limits and didn't have to come in front of zoning board.
Okay. Thank you.
And there are two houses over, there's another house that had built onto the second, added a second floor. When we purchased, they were under construction, so that was in 2017. And then on the corner of St., was it St. Martin and Bryn Mawr, there's a house that they, that they built. I know, they might not have added a full second story, but they definitely dormered out. That was right before the pandemic started.
Okay. Good. And there's other front porches?
There's other front porches in, on your street.
Yes.
And is your house, when you look to the houses to either side of you, is your house in front of those houses or in line with those houses?
I would say it's in line.
Yeah, I would say it's in line with the houses around us.
Thank you.
I think we're just a little bit wider than most of our neighbors.
Yeah, the style of our house, you can tell it was built after the rest of the houses because we're the only one on the neighbor, like on the street that looks a little bit different.
Two sides.
Oh, thank you.
Depth-wise. You're on side to side.
Have you guys seen this yet?
That was my next lesson next month, was to learn to do that.
Awesome.
Thank you, Suzanne. Thank you. Very helpful.
And Mr. Chairman, just so we don't come back to my letter, the only other two items we outlawed in our review is just recognizing through existing nonperforming setbacks for the accessory buildings in the rear of the property. But the applicant is not proposing any change to those. Just want to recognize those.
Thank you. And there's no issue with rain, stormwater?
They were already in this property, and it was your application. Was your application this property, and then the application runs for the property. They already received the variance to go to 46%. This proposal now is not going to add any additional impervious coverage as it's going up over existing impervious.
Did we ask them to do something, rain collection before?
Yes. So on the last application, I was asked to make sure, we built a garage, and I was asked to put in, obviously, gutters on the garage to dry wells in the ground. So all the rainwater from my garage goes into well to the storage containers in the ground, and then into my yard. We have it feeding our little garden area.
They went through the grading plan process, and they successfully complied with the conditions of their approval prior.
And I think you made a comment about the rainwater should be directed away from neighbors.
Yeah, and in our letter, the new rain gutters that you're doing, direct them as much as possible to follow the drainage, which it looks like your drainage follows out to the street from the front half of your house.
Yes.
Try to mimic the same drainage patterns that currently exist and not drain onto the neighboring properties or the side yards.
Yeah, we will make sure.
Be connected with our contractor, make sure they're aware.
Yeah, yes. And on the left-hand side, it already drains to the street, so we already have the PVC pipe there, so we can just make sure that that gets reconnected when they build the porch. And on the right-hand side, the back actually goes to the street, but the front isn't tied in, which during this project, I will make sure that the front is tied into that drain pipe so that all rainwater will be directed toward the street and won't, in fact, have any negative effect on the people around us.
Thank you.
And I encourage you to say that you're not significantly changing the roof line. You're just moving it straight up. So the slope of the corridor will be generally going to the same place that everything else is going.
Yes, exactly. It's going to stay, the roof line is going to stay exactly the same, just moving a little bit higher. So it won't change where the runoff is going at all.
I want to open up to the public. Anybody from the public have any comments or questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Thank you. I have to do it.
You guys must be good neighbors.
We're all very excited about this project.
I'm sure you've spoken to your neighbors. Everybody's like, sounds good. Okay. All right, wonderful. Does anyone have any other questions? All right, we'll let, Emily, you want to go through the criteria?
Sure. We're here this evening for an application for a C2 planning variance. And for that, an applicant must show that the proposed variance advances one of the purposes of the municipal land use law, and that benefits of granting that variance would substantially outweigh any detriments of granting that variance. This evening, we heard that the proposal will promote a desirable visual environment for the neighborhood. It's in keeping with the neighborhood aesthetic. Other homes in the area are two stories, such as they're proposing, and it does comply with that. The front porch is something that is a nice addition in aesthetic. So if the board finds that that substantially outweighs any detriments that this application might propose, and that this application does not impair the intent of the master planner zoning ordinance, they can grant approval.
Thank you. Any other questions? We have a, maintain a motion? Michael second? Any discussion? I agree. I mean, this is a typical vertical expansion of a nonperforming use that we see multiple times. The applicant has indicated they're not going to expand that, so it's not an issue in my perspective.
Ms. Bonacorsi.
Yes.
Mr. Madden.
Yes.
Chairman Dukakis.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mayor Hauck.
Yes.
Mr. Famular.
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time.
Yep. We'll vote on this resolution next month, but then it's an appeal period. Appeal period, 45 days after it gets printed in the paper.
Yes.
Resolution. Anybody could come forward and say, ah, I disagree with it, but it's not likely that's going to happen.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you very much.
Goodbye.
Is there anything else from, nope, nope.
Everything else has to go through Suzanne of the construction office.
All right, well, thank you again.
Good night, guys.
Thank you.
Take care.
My first planning board night, we had a case very similar to that. It was at the very end of a, like a two-and-a-half, three-hour meeting, and it was. Do you remember that? Do you remember that? Yeah. And like, the entire meeting quietly in the back. And their case was five minutes, and we're like.
All right, thank you very much. Did everybody get a copy of my research paper?
Mm-hmm.
We were asked by, and also staff members of the town, to take a look at your development fee structure. We did so. I just want to point out, as a courtesy, meaning no to the borough. As I explained last time, and I kind of telegraphed what this product is, is we reviewed the fee structure of not only our existing fee structure, but also surrounding and the JCP. Only at Barrington, Mountie from Henfield. Not all touching us, but most of them are just right around the areas. And the exercise really was to provide you with actually their individual fee structures. And if you read through them, there's no way to do a wonderful spreadsheet, even though I tried. I tried to put this in a spreadsheet because it's apples to oranges to pears to compots. It's, nothing matches up. So what I have, three main points that I want to bring up, and then I'll kind of go to our recommendations. A lot of municipalities have combined escrows, and a lot of them have separate escrows for planning, engineering, and legal. My recommendation is having a separate planning engineer and a separate legal escrow, mainly because it helps the office in how they're operating, and it's also just much, much more cleaner of a process. The second thing is several municipalities, including Haddon Heights, has an initial deposit. So instead of an applicant paying for the fees that are required and prescribed by an ordinance, including Haddon Heights currently and our current ordinance structure, it says, just give us an initial deposit of X. Well, then, when the initial deposit is utilized, because it's anticipated that the fee is going to be for the fee structure, even our antiquated fee structure, the initial deposit is substantially lower than what is prescribed for a type of application. Then unfortunately, the borough staff have to go and ask the applicants, and a lot of them are residential, saying, by the way, you owe additional money. It's much better to give money back, in my opinion, at the end of an application process than ask for additional funds to bring their accounts current. So I believe the initial deposit provisions of our ordinance should absolutely be eliminated. Henfield still does it, but they don't, they have it in their ordinance, but they don't comply with it. Yeah. But Henfield has an initial deposit provision, but, but I think everybody, a lot of people have the initial deposit, but they don't actually use it. We should not use it, and we should not have. The other thing is, just wanted, this is a provision, and it's in everybody's applications and ordinance. This still means that the applicant will sign as part of their application forms that they will pay all reasonable costs for any land use application, so it's not on a burden of the municipality. So say, for instance, you do have a minor subdivision. They come in, I'll give you two examples of minor subdivision. Application for a minor subdivision is presented. It is approved by the board. Certain compliance comments are in there, bearings, distances, legal descriptions, that type of stuff. And the applicant's professional come in, and they submit it, and on the first time through, they complied with all the items because they understood what it was. Another comparison is that same type of minor subdivision, but it takes three or four times with the applicant's professional, mainly surveyors, nothing is surveyors, to actually comply with not only our ordinance, but not filing law, which we have to comply with because that state statute. So they have to put everything on the plan that requires. Well, if we're reviewing it three or four times, that's not the same as one time. So there are occasions where an applicant will be required to remit additional funds, but there'll be justification for it. The, I'll go right to the last appendix, because this is really the meat of the subject. So I included our existing fee structure, and I will tell you that Haddon Heights is not alone in how this, their fee structure has evolved over the years. It has been add-on, so you had an initial fee structure, then there was an add-on by an ordinance, add-on by ordinance, add-on by ordinance, subtracting by ordinance. It was never wholesale redone. But the last appendix is a recommendation of, which is appendix, last couple pages. Appendix I. I reviewed all those other documents and came up with what I believe is a middle-of-the-road, I even put that in my letter, that we would, if you considered this, and by the way, I have no, I'm going to use the horrible word, hubris in authorship. So anybody want to change or question or comment on? I'm just doing this to help with the process. But I believe this would cover, if you go down through them, minor subdivisions, which we see most, you're most of. A major, you never know if we're going to see one or not, but we're covered on this, and this would be appropriate. And the major is preliminary and final. Then we have a minor site plan. We really don't have a good definition. I think some of the things that we're doing here, we would follow up in application forms, which I've already been, Suzanne and Karen in my office have already been discussing. We have a lot of good model application forms that we have done for other towns, including some bigger towns, that we could borrow and take the boilerplate and have in Haddon Heights. Absolutely. Check, that's for the fee schedule, but also our application is a kind of weird application.
It is.
We can absolutely give you a more streamlined, straightforward.
It's taken me three years to learn how to read it.
Yeah, and also, so it's more publicly digestible, you know? So I think this, this will be like the first step. Then with this, you have some clarifications on what, what a minor site plan is versus a major site plan. Because if someone's just coming in for a small vestigial addition on a commercial building, on the Black Horse Pike or White Horse Pike, that's a minor site plan. If they're going in and changing so many, over a certain amount of square foot of coverage, just like you have a grading plan, if you go over 500 square feet on a site development, you have to do a grading plan. If you go over X number of square feet on a site plan development, then you're a major, because that's where it starts getting into stormwater and everything else. I also included something that you're seeing more and more of, which is a site plan waiver. Typically, you see a site plan waiver when someone comes in for a use variance, mainly for their own financing purposes, not so much for the borough. So if someone's coming in asking, I would like to take, perfect example is the application we just had the other month where, on the White Horse Pike, where they're coming in for the counseling center. That was a use variance. Sometimes, and I see this in other municipalities, financing institutions require them to have a site plan approval to go with it. Well, we don't want, they really weren't changing that much, and I believe even what they did was at the level of a site plan waiver. But that way, that review of that, the additional parking spot, simple review of the lighting, would be covered under the site. would be covered under the site plan waiver. It's going to be written in the ordinance. So the ordinance is going to say, so I have a great example. Yeah, so, it's going to be, it's not going to be, the interpretation will be by your planning office, your community development office, which is Suzanne and Dave, where we're always there, and any questions that come to us, we always answer as courtesy. But this is an example of a site plan waiver for loss or council. So if you're not doing anything substantially to change drainage, floodplains, waterways, open space, means of because, any, anything, and this could actually be clarified even more, but we actually would include a definition of what a site plan waiver is. And that way, it's pretty clear for the interpretation going for, because if we go through this process, probably won't be touched yet for another 10 years, or probably longer than that. Preliminary major site plan, final major site plan, these are for your larger applications. I'm trying to think, I think when CBS came in, that, that, that's a major site plan, or anything of that type of nature. Probably most of our applications, even the commercial ones, are probably still going to be in the level of a minor. Then we go into variance applications. So there are four types of variance, variances in municipal land use law, land use law, A, B, C, D. We usually only see the C, which is the bulk, or the D, which is the use. We usually don't see the appeals or the interpretations, but we have that. So that's why you see A, B, and C are all the same, uh, in terms of like a bulk, uh, a bulk variance application, which are pretty straightforward, straightforward. Just so you know, the structure right here for the C variance is very consistent for residential as it is right now. So this is what we, we have provisions to collect. We, we, we've been working with the office, not all the fees are always collected, and I think that'd be better, if we have a better, more straightforward checklist type of deed calculation sheet. Yes.
So saving their case, looking at, what do you need for your report, is this a variance?
No. One application, one application, we could provide clarification.
So it's not going to cost $10,000?
No. I've, I've dealt with other municipalities that have like, you get 10 C variances, and it turns out to be $15,000, that's not. It, this would cover any reasonable review. And also then, I did separate the, the variances between residential and commercial, because commercial ones usually get a little bit more complicated, because we're worried more about the parking and the lighting and things like that versus the residential.
Is that based upon the zone material, or do you...
And if, if they...
Is the residential on the White Horse Bike, surrounded by that, or is it purely residential?
It, if it's still, well, a C variance in that zone... Yeah, so... It, it doesn't matter where they're to, it's only in their, any, any property in their zone, whether it's residence or commercial, if the exist is, if the use is permitted, and they need a C variance, coverage, front yard, rear yard setback, any of those type of things that we'd like, just like we saw this evening, then that would be covered under the C application. And then, but we did make a little difference for commercial, because a lot of times we have, perfect example is an application like this evening, uh, don't want to say about this application, but a typical residential application, they're usually for an impermeable, and then you have to deal with the front yard, rear yard, and things like that. But when you get to a commercial property, on the Black Horse Bike, White Horse Bike, or even along Kings Highway, then you have to question and do the calculations for parking, look at lighting real quick, and those type of things, and all those things have to be reflected, not only in our review, but also in the resolution. Yeah, exactly. And that's, that's if it doesn't meet the, the level of a minor site plan. Correct, correct. Um, and like, that's like a small addition. Yes. Yes. It's because no one's touched that one since the model ordinance. So way back in the seventies, we had model ordinances, that was provided to us by the state of New Jersey, and that's where everybody had that little canned book that has since been expanded. They also gave us model fees, and a lot of them were like $100, and a lot of them haven't changed since 1970, what was it, two? When did we do our ordinance here? Seventy-three, yeah. So all the model, all the state model stuff came out in the seventies, took a couple years for all the towns to roll out, so. Then, what I also included was lock rating applications. And this is any application that requires, uh, that is going over 500 square feet of disturbance. And not all applications get to that merit, but this is where we learned that we absolutely, especially with all the pools and everything else that went in over the last several years, and since we've been here, a lot of, there were a lot, there were a lot of things getting built that never had to deal with lock rating, so this is absolutely appropriate to do. We're doing it now. But the application, and by the way, all the application fees, as I sort of outlined in the beginning, that goes to the office. We're not actually collecting any application fees right now. So that goes to the office, just like the construction permit fees go to the construction office to offset the, the staffing costs. So that way, application fees go to the office to offset that, so it's not a burden on the rest of the citizens of the, of the borough. But we separated it between residential and commercial, and we did it without storm improvements, meaning that if this board says, it's, it's, you're disturbing, but you're doing other things to mitigate and everything else, you don't have to do an infiltration system. That's one way. Or, no, you are disturbing, you're not really mitigating anything, and you're up to the level of a small infiltration system. Well then, its calculations involve, as we reviewed, signed off on, and that's why there's a difference there. Correct, that would not be complete.
All right, so as it stands now, the situation we're in, that if any of these cases come before us, we hear them, and then our only ability to then go back, try to collect when we've exceeded what was posted in escrow, is holding their C. You know, D, it's a mixed bag of success. And some of these, like, probably predate really our awareness of the issue of this. So there's some, in Emily's predecessor, we're going back, looking at legal fees, it's like, many of those escrows have been closed out, you know, and we realize there's, there's gaps, so.
It's, and, we have, we have a couple of professionals on the board here, so, but we're, we're bound, so we only build to the quarter hour for exactly the work that we do. Anything that's left over, that goes right back, and we bill against escrow with very, very detailed statements that is a requirement of municipal land use law. I assume it's a very similar requirement for attorneys, but I think you guys are tense of an hour, am I correct? Okay, that's the only difference there, but, you know, it, this would be a better structure. The other thing, uh, before I, I don't want to belabor this, but on the last couple pages, is performance guarantees and inspection escrows. We should clean up the language in our ordinance, just to state whatever the municipal land use law prescribes for that, because they're changing it now and again, but they, they have to, anything that has a, uh, site plan involved with it, or a major subdivision involved with it, or a minor site plan with improvements, they should post inspection escrows. So what you approve is actually inspected before they get their C. We are, we have been lax in this municipality, and other municipalities have also done that, but to get their approval, they go out and build, no one's really paying attention, and they're not building what's on the plan. So I think you should follow the letter of the law and require those things, which are prescribed by state statute. And then tax map provisions, you have to get, uh, very diligent, anybody who does a minor subdivision. We already have a tax map ordinance, which I attached to the, the back of that last appendix. We have to make sure we collect that money, so the borough's not paying for tax map provisions. Well, the borough's going to pay for tax map provisions, this offsets the cost for people that are, that are making those revisions required. We already have the ordinance, we just have to start making sure, and there's a, a new forum, put that in the checkbox, minor subdivision, did you pay for the tax map provision date before you come in, because you're not going to get it afterwards. Where's up, from a subdivision? Yes. Bought one, but he didn't, did he subdivide it? I don't recall the application. Yeah, no. Yeah, so he wouldn't do that, if it's already existing law. Yeah. So this is only for someone that comes in with a subdivision. We probably only solve... Yeah, yeah, you, you probably see once, one every couple of years. That's not in here. That's not in here. I did not, I did not do anything with that, because I kind of don't get involved with those.
The legal of...
Yeah, so I, I, I'm not going to bother you, Emily, but that's something that, that would probably, just, most of that is... Yeah, and then, then remove any engineering and planning, because we don't, don't need review of that. And then, and we're going to share our recommendation with Suzanne. Suzanne, you can work with Karen and myself, and we can expand this to include any other fee that you think should be included in here, so such like for the certification of pre-existing, non-conforming, whatever you want as one total fee structure, fee schedule, that way you can have it as part of the application materials. Eventually, we'll get all the application materials on the website with fee structure, so everybody can just look it up and, you know, have everything at a time. Correct.
Right, so, at this, yeah, at this point, we would, we can, it would be, since Emily could speak to this, because it came to planning board first. Normally, we would probably want to introduce, we would refer to planning board, but since the planning board already has it, has been discussing this, what would be the procedure? Would you just send, put a recommendation?
Yep.
Okay. Right. Correct. Beautiful. So, you know, you're looking at turnaround time, probably either first meeting in February or...
Yeah, so it's a March, somewhere in March.
Yeah.
You probably have the second reading, right? If you... So you would, you would ask the board secretary, just write a nice little cover letter to mayor and council, attach this, you have reviewed it on such and such a night, and you recommend the governing body consider the provisions adopted with the one add-on for adding the fee for the certification of...
Right. And then we can have, we'll work through the writing of it in the, in January, I imagine, and have it, like I said, probably ready to be introduced by February, which puts us on par.
And one last tagline, uh, if you look at the run of meat ordinance, that was just, they just went through, we, we were fortunate enough to represent them as well, they just went through a very similar process. You're not the, they're also a middle of the road, and they're, they, they just did the same thing, and I would suspect that some of the other surrounding communities...
Follow suit.
They'll follow suit, only because I represent them as well, this was a good effort. So, and it's, and I think it was a good exercise, uh, to help, not only Haddon Heights, but I think it's going to help a lot of the other towns as well. Well, no, no, so, the, you, as a board, are just making recommendations. So it's a change in your ordinance, I, I believe the governing body has the right to change fees, independent of planning board review, but, yeah, so, but you're making a recommendation, then they have to change it by their ordinance, doesn't have to come back here, so... They, they recognize their fees every year. Yeah, they're going to recognize all the fees, the one resolution recognizes every single fee they have in the entire borough and putting dog licenses. So that's, that's that one.
Same subject.
Do you really? Planning boards? I don't think you have to do that. I don't think you have to, as a planning board, have to adopt a resolution like that from a preferred Emily. Yeah, I think you do, I think you, you can get out of that business. Yeah. They probably have done it, got it... Yeah, I think it'll all be done on the municipal level. That, that's kind of antiquated, because now everything's on the website, right? So this is the first step, then I think there's going to be some conversations about the application forms, that we're going to work in-house, to try to do that. We'll come back before any application forms are circulated in public, everybody's going to have a copy of those. And then, Mr. Mayor, there's going to be some changes to the ordinance, that's going to have to be done, so we're going to have to figure out how to get that done on the, the town level, on the borough level.
Easy enough.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Wait, real quick, do we need, do we want to make a recommend, a motion for a recommendation to refer this to...
You, you don't need a resolution, all you need is exactly that consensus, and...
So it's a, it's a thumbs up, thumbs down?
You could, you could do it, which one?
Hi? All right? Wonderful. No, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure we were good to go, and I'm on the mayor's end, and I got to wait till we got to send it to you guys again. How's our sign ordinance going? If not, I'm sure, I'm sure we can find something down Atlantic Avenue, we open. Yeah. Do you know what my weekend's going to look like? And I'm getting promoted on Monday night.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to excuse myself from that.
It's very, very busy.
I'm going to excuse myself this evening.
My liver is going to quit. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Aye? All right.